She had a 4:30 appointment and she texted me and says she's still sitting there.
I agree.
I'm not involved with that.
I started. My dad got a stroke, going to Dr. Brown, talking to my mother. And I don't. Mrs. Barlow, your husband's going to be on the way. He's going to be in a change of person. He's going to be a different man than he was. You learn to deal with it. But one night when he sat there in that office for about an hour, threw a fit. And the doctor was like, get another doctor. My husband ran into you.
Seven o'clock, like a call to be in order. Roll call.
Barlow.
Here.
Bowers.
Yes.
Brown.
Here.
Jarvis.
Here.
McLean. Nesbit.
Here.
Rezegi.
Here.
Stensel Barton.
Here.
Tassiva.
Here. Entertained motion to excuse Councilmember McCain, McLean.
So move.
Support. Motion by Barlow, supported by Jarvis, to excuse Councilmember McLean. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same. Please rise for pledge.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the free and public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone tonight. Everybody get a chance to look at the agenda? Do I hear a motion to approve?
A motion to approve is written?
Support. Motion by Jarvis, supported by Rezegi. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same. In your packet, you have the minutes of July 8th, 2024, regular meeting. Any additions or corrections? Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Support.
Okay, a motion was made by Barlow, supported by Jarvis, to approve the minutes of July 8th, 2024, regular meeting as presented. Any discussion? Roll call.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brown.
Yep.
Yes. Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean. Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
And Tassiva.
Yes. Public hearings, we have none. Public comment. Anybody at this time would like to get up and speak for three minutes? Tell me who you are. I'll give you three minutes.
Nobody. Okay, moving on. Formal recognition and presentation. We have on our agenda each week, a presentation by Dave Hatfield. I think he's having a meeting tonight on solar. Solar at county level, so he's not here. Sir, would you like to introduce our guest tonight?
Sure. So Jeff Sluggit and Clinton from his office are here this evening to be introduced to you. You may remember a few council meetings or two ago, it was announced that they would be joining us for code enforcement and municipal code enforcement issues as they arise. So staff has already met with them. I believe they've introduced themselves to you, like you were here just a few moments ago. But if you have any questions to direct to them, or if you wanted to make a quick statement, Jeff, just introducing yourself, we'd appreciate that.
Do you want me to back you up or?
Yes, because we're live streaming, so the public can see you back there, Jeff. Thank you.
Okay, can I be heard? Is that, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening. It's nice to see some of you for the first time and some of you for the second or third time, so it's a pleasure to be back. My name is Jeff Sluggit. I'm with Bloom Sluggit. We're based in Grand Rapids. This was an opportunity afforded to us, and we wanted to take advantage of it to introduce ourselves to you. We have been asked and are honored to have been asked to work with the city, with Dickinson Wright, the city attorney, on ordinance enforcement matters. We are a general municipal firm. We represent somewhere in the neighborhood of 70 communities as general counsel. Clinton Roskoff, who I'm going to introduce in a second, and Ashley Russett in our office, do almost all of our ordinance enforcement and code enforcement work. That's all they do. And they do it for approximately, Clinton can correct me, but I think it's approximately 40 communities where we do the ordinance enforcement. And it varies. Some of the communities are quite large, and the prosecutions that we handle are criminal in nature. Many are smaller communities, some are rural communities, and they tend to be more municipal civil infractions when you're talking about the nature of the violations that we prosecute. We have worked with, I guess the other thing I'd like to mention is we've worked with Jessica and Jessica's office for many, many years. I actually recruited her at my old firm from the Court of Appeals. And so Jessica and I have known each other for over 20 years. So I'm anticipating a very seamless relationship. And anything we can do to support the city and Dickinson Wright, we're more than willing to do, so. With that, let me introduce Clinton.
Yes, thank you. Clinton Roskoff, I work with Jeff at Bloom Sluggit. Like he said, I mainly am responsible for just code enforcement of the firm, so I'm happy to help out with any issues that do arise. Myself and Ashley Russett have been working on the code enforcement, mainly just us two within the firm, but we do have the backing of the whole firm, such as Jeff and everyone else involved in the firm, which has been great. A little bit about myself, I've been working with the firm for two years? Before that, I had, basically my legal career was based in just criminal law. I was a prosecutor for both Meskegee and Ottawa counties, so I had some court experience. And I hope to bring that over and help you guys out in any way I can. So if any issues do arise, we've talked with Jessica about the transition and who to contact and who to go to. You can always contact Jessica for any code enforcement issues. But you can always contact our firm, and I can answer those issues for you as well. So look forward to the opportunity and hope we can help out in any way we can.
Any questions? Well, it's great to see you back, Jeff, and nice to meet you, Clinton. So looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Item C, unanimous consent, consider approval of the 2024 Amateur World Disc Golf Tournament, August 5th through August 10th, 2024, at Hammond Hill. May I have anybody here to talk about this?
I'll make that motion, sir.
Hey.
Support.
We have a motion by Bowers, supported by Nesbit, to approve the 2024 Amateur World Disc Golf Tournament, August 5th through August 10th, 2024, at Hammond Hill. Nobody here to answer any questions, so roll call.
Brown.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Tassiva.
Yes. Item B, in your packet, you have an application from William Mattson to the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeal. It is my recommendation that we appoint William Mattson to the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeal. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion by Rezegi, supported by Barlow, to approve the mayor's appointment of William A. Mattson to the Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeal. Discussion. Roll call.
Jarvis.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Tassiva.
Yes. Item C, in your packet, you have the appointment of Linda Perrin as City Clerk Treasurer, effective August 12th, 2024, pending conclusion of a background check. Do I hear a motion to approve her appointment?
I'll make that motion.
Support. Got to wait a second. It'll take longer to write Stensel Barton down.
Man said, I'm done with this place.
Motion by Stensel Barton, supported by Rezegi. That was Rezegi, right?
Yes.
His voice is different tonight. To approve the appointment of Linda Perrin as the City Clerk Treasurer, effective August 12th, 2024, pending the conclusion of a background check. Any questions, comments? Roll call.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brown.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
Tassiva.
Yes. Now I'll turn it over to you, and you can introduce her.
Okay. Well, I am delighted to introduce Linda to all of you. She's currently with High Point Bank, and previously she's served in a lot of other capacities for various businesses, including finance director and controller. She's local to our community, so she understands our values and what's important to us. She's a great communicator, she's very amiable, and I think will lead the finance department very well. So we're very pleased to welcome Linda to our team.
Anybody have any questions of Linda? Well, I would like to go on record to welcome you tonight, but I know you're not going to start till August though. And I already had the pleasure of meeting her today, and I think she's going to be a great fit for the city of Hastings. Okay. Item 10, items of business. Item A, consider adoption of Resolution 2024-20 CSI Equipment Lease Agreement as presented. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Do I hear support?
I'll support it.
Okay, we have a motion by Rezegi, supported by Jarvis, to adopt Resolution 2024-20 CSI Equipment Lease Agreement as presented. Discussion. Anybody have any questions? This is, is this the same price as when we negotiated with them three months ago?
It's slightly different because they didn't have the hardware anymore when we went to finalize their quote, so they had to re-quote. It was a few hundred dollars different. It was very similar. So it's actually possible that we will have to re-quote again, but they're trying to keep it all very similar hardware and within the same price range.
But we have to, we have to approve this contract first, any all right?
Correct, yep.
Any other questions? Sorry. Roll call.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
No.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brown.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
And Tassiva.
Yes. Okay, item B, consider approval under direction of staff of the request for the downtown business team to revise the site plan for August 10th, 2024, block party to include street closure from entire, street closure to the entire section of South Jefferson Street, from State Street to Court Street. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Rezegi, supported by Barlow, to approve under direction of staff, the request from the downtown business team to revise the site plan for August 10th, 2024, block party to include State Street closure for the entire section of South Jefferson Street, from State Street to Court Street. Anybody here going to talk about this?
We have Brian Reynolds here tonight.
Okay, well, thank you for your consideration here. The block party for June, we got rained out, but it turned into a successful event anyway because we had made previous arrangements to, in case of rain, move inside Old Town Tavern, which is exactly what we did. And we had a very good event inside Old Town. The July event was much better weather, and we had good attendance. I wouldn't call it great attendance, but we have such great cooperation and help from our city staff. They spotted 15 picnic tables down there, and all of those picnic tables were occupied, and some people had the foresight to bring some of their own folding chairs down. It wasn't perfect weather for dancing because it was a little bit warm and humid that night, but we had a, we had a very good time in spite of the heat and humidity. For the August event, we want to partner with the Hastings Cornhole Club and actually have what amounts to two simultaneous events side by side. They will be having a cornhole tournament at the north end of the block, right by the Big Matt mural. And we will be moving the street dance and block party down to the south end of the block. And the events are perfectly compatible, and I expect to have a much bigger crowd because we have two simultaneous events there. Would you like to?
I figured that's what you'd hear before.
I'm Tony Coffin. I started the Hastings Cornhole Club. Brian asked us to come join their event to try to get more people downtown, and we've been excited to try to get downtown and play on the streets anyway. We'd actually like to try to do more events in the future, too. Great guys, great gals. That's about it, I guess. Does she got questions?
Anybody got any questions of Tony or this guy over here at Santa Claus? Any questions? Okay, if there's no further questions, we have a motion and a support to approve. Roll call.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brown.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Tassiva.
Yes. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward to coming down and watching you guys.
We have some very good players, pros, semi-pros, anywhere, any race.
See if my arm can hold up.
You're one of the pros.
Okay. No. That's why my arm hurts when I play.
Having bean bags.
Yeah. Item C, consider approval under direction of staff of the Youth Advisory Council's request to hold the 24th Annual Roofset in Downtown Hastings on Saturday, October 19th, 2024, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that. Make that motion, sir.
I'll second it.
Motion by Bowers, supported by Stensel Barton. I'm going to shorten your name. To approve, under direction of staff, the Youth Advisory Council's request to hold the 24th Annual Roofset in Downtown Hastings on Saturday, October 19th, 2024, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:30 p.m. Any discussion? Roll call.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brown.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Tassiva.
Yes. Okay, item D, consider approval of the Berry County Serenity Club to accept donations and free will offerings during the overdose awareness day concert on Saturday, August 31st, 2024, at the Thruna Plaza.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Okay, a motion by Rezegi.
Support.
Supported by Nesbit. To approve the Berry County Serenity Club to accept donations and free will offerings during the overdose awareness day concert on Saturday, August 31st, 2024, at the Thruna Plaza. Discussion. You guys hear from Serenity Club?
Yes.
Yes, we do have two representatives.
Go up here and tell us what you're going to do.
How are you?
Good.
Thanks for your time. My name's John Coe. I'm the current CFO on the board of directors at the Serenity Club. This is our fourth annual, and so obviously you've heard a little bit before, and this is the fourth time we'll be down there. So if anybody asks me any questions about what we do at the club, obviously we have a place where recovery meetings take place, and we have members that we offer, just a safe place for them to socialize with each other, get together. We play in different events in the recovery community, and yeah, we enjoy doing it, so.
I got a question. Is the Serenity Club only in Hastings, or is that like a group of them around the state or country?
Nope, it's specific to Hastings. This is something, and this is Roy DePotty, he's actually the founder of the club.
Okay.
Ten years ago that started that.
I hear a lot of good things here.
Good, thank you.
There are LNO clubs. It's very similar. The only thing with LNO clubs are they're strictly AA, and we have both, because it's a small community, we need, you know, A, A, and A involvement in it, so you can't actually follow the LNO name. So that's why we chose the Serenity Club.
If I may ask, is this right next to Shell? Is that where you guys are at?
Yes, they're across the street.
Okay, I do know about you.
John?
I have been to this event the past couple of years, and it really gives people a place to go to get things off their chest and find that there's other people that relate to the same thing.
Yeah, absolutely. So in addition to the bands playing or whatever, we do have speakers take opportunity and kind of tell stories, and then we work together with the drug task force to offer Narcan kits and give instruction on kind of how to use them and.
I'll be there again this year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a support to approve the request. Roll call.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brown.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Tassiva.
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Let me know what you need.
Uh, item B, consider approval or proposal for engineering services for final clarifier number two improvements at the wastewater treatment plant by Moore Brujink. Brujink? I got it. For $42,700. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Support.
I make motions just to make you write my last name.
Yeah, motion by Stensel Barton, supported by Rezegi, to approve a proposal for engineering services for finer, final clarifier number two improvements at the wastewater treatment plant by Moore Brujink. I fucked that guy the other day and told me I had to pronounce it. For $42,700. Questions? Go ahead.
I do have a question. The other day, I think it was Wednesday, we drove by the plant, and it's the first time that it smelled that bad. It was there, is the clarifier got something to do with that?
Uh, yeah, the final clarifier, no, that's not, that doesn't have anything to do with it.
I mean, it's, I know they're supposedly stopping the odor, and then I haven't noticed it, and boy, it was bad the other day.
We've had some issues with the sludge, sludge valve that's jammed up. We had to, we had to use the vector truck to suck some of that stuff out. And they probably put it on drying, the drying beds in the back. That's typically when you get really bad odors at the wastewater treatment plant is when we use the drying beds in the back.
Is that because of the wipes that people use?
No, it was just a mechanical failure. We're getting that fixed currently, looking into it, so.
But I haven't noticed it in a long time, and then the other day it was bad.
I wonder why they put all those restaurants, or that sewer plant, put all those restaurants.
Right.
So we, our vector truck is able to handle that. Because in past, we used to have somebody come in with a bigger truck with.
It depends how deep it is. We can only suck so, if it's so deep, we'll use our vector truck. Then we have to call somebody else. We need a bigger one.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? So is this something, this clarifier, is this something we should have fixed when we did the nine million dollar improvements down there?
Yes, we probably should have fixed that at the same time. It's 50 years old.
But that wasn't identified.
Well, I, you know, it was before my time, but there was a lot of things that they cost savings measures that they had, too, so they just eliminated some of these things.
All right. Any other questions? Roll call.
Brown.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Tassiva.
Yes.
I do have a question. We're approving that they're going to engineer it. How much is it going to cost to fix it?
Um.
And I just want to estimate.
The estimate's about $400,000.
$400,000 to fix it, right? Okay.
Okay. Item F, consider approving the purchase of service line replacement parts from Etna Supply in amount of $154,5861. This is for lead line replacement. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion. Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Barlow, supported by Jarvis, to approve the purchase of service line replacement parts from Etna Supply in amount of $154,5861. Questions? So is this $154,000, is this going to cover, because I thought I seen something in there that said like 75. Is this for all 100 services we just approved, or just 75?
Um, this should cover most, most of them. I would say 100.
Here's Rob Neal. Yeah. I'm Rob Neal, street superintendent. I ordered a lot of this stuff. So we have 40, a little over 40 rolls of copper in stock of each, of one inch and some others. So this will cover that, this 100 that we're doing this year, plus some, and some emergencies in between, and we will have some extra. We've made some provisions in there. When we first started the program, we seemed to be getting a lot of waste, so we've made some provisions in that to start making it a little more cost-effective to do that. Some of these fittings and stuff that were in here also, some of them are 25 to 30 weeks, so we have enough to get through the fall. And then by the time this order comes in, we should be into spring, and they should be here by then. That's my hope.
So for 100 lead water, water service replacements, we're looking at $300,000 for 100 of them, if you include what we included last, councilman, plus this year.
Yeah, if you include the materials plus the plumbing contract.
Now this, these parts don't include anything that the plumber has to supply, right?
Right.
There are some things in there. But the reason I question it, because it says here 75 curb stops. Seventy-five quick joints. You know, that's why I asked if we're, if we're getting enough parts for all a hundred.
I didn't bring that list with me, Mr. Mayor, but to my recollection, we have forty to fifty in stock right now. And the reason we were doing that, same thing with like the water meters, they take so long to get, right? Now it doesn't matter where you're at or who you are, it takes a long time to get them.
Okay, they just, there were just a couple items popped out when I looked at it. And I know, but I know you guys are on top of it, so it's not an issue. Any other questions? Thanks, Rob. Roll call.
Jarvis.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brum.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Item G, consider approval of the purchase of gasoline diesel fuel slash diesel fuel from Crystal Flash for seventy thousand dollars. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Brum.
Support.
Support by Barlow, to approve the purchase of gasoline diesel fuel from Crystal Flash for seventy thousand dollars. Doesn't say how many gallons that is. Any discussion?
How many gallons is it?
So part of the reason we're doing this in bulk is when they give the price for gasoline or diesel, they will secure it for twenty-four hours. That's always good for it. The last time we got five thousand gallons of gas and it was right around thirteen thousand dollars. And I think it was two sixty-nine a gallon. Current price at this time is two, two thirty-nine by five thousand or over for gas, diesel and measure.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Roll call.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brum.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Uh, next item, consider approval for the purchase of two V-bottom Monroe salt spreaders for, from Truck and Trailer in Dutton for fifty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion there, Mayor.
Stensel Barton, do I hear a, motion by Stensel Barton, do I hear a second? Support. Still writing his name out. Motion made by Stensel Barton, supported by Jarvis, to approve the purchase of two V-bottom Monroe salt spreaders from Truck and Trailer Specialties at Dutton in amount of fifty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars. Any further comments? I don't even want to think about snow. You got about six months of time, don't you, Rob? No further discussion, roll call.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brum.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Okay, you have a, item I, you have a proposal in your packet for compo screening for precise excavating in the amount of twenty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion, sir.
Motion by Barlow, supported by.
Jarvis.
Jarvis, to approve the proposal for compo screening for precise excavating for twenty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. Did this a couple of years ago, it was about twenty thousand in, wasn't it?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Couple of years ago we did this and it was like twenty thousand in, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Well, the price really hasn't gone up.
Yeah, the price goes up very little with that. At this time, the first time we did it was just under nineteen thousand. Last year it was just under twenty, so like everything else, it's going up. This company has done some great work and had great communication with us out there, so they've been great to work with.
So do you work hand in hand with them if they need a loader out there or something?
Not generally. I mean, usually they bring everything they need, but if we need something, the owner himself is usually the one that's out there doing it. He just gives me, me a call and I'll help him however I can.
What do you do with all this black dirt when you compost it and find it?
We use it back out in the community for behind backfilling curbs, stumps. This year we've got a project coming up to level out the fish hatchery softball field, which is gonna take a fair amount of black dirt and sand and some sock drains to get that leveled back up, so they don't have to play in water on the right field.
Any questions, Rob, on this? Okay, we have motion by Barlow, supported by Jarvis, to approve compo screening for precise excavating for twenty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. No further comments, roll call.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brum.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Item G, consider approval of the purchase of chlorine for the water treatment plant from Alexander Chemical for twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Nesbit.
I'll support.
Supported by Stensel Barton.
You'll have to get a rubber stamp, wait.
Motion by Nesbit, supported by Stensel Barton, to approve the purchase of chlorine for the water treatment plant for Alexander Chemical for twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. And this is two hundred and twenty-five dollars per cylinder. Each cylinder weighs a hundred and fifty pounds and typical, typical number of cylinders for the year range from forty-eight to fifty-two. That's where the sum of eighteen thousand, eight hundred to eleven thousand, seven hundred comes from. Evelyn also provided a quote for two seventy-seven, fifty per cylinder, just a little background information. It's laying right in front of me, it's easy to read, so. We have a motion in support. Any further comments? Roll call.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brum.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Item K, consider approval of the purchase of traffic control signs from Dornbosse Signs in amount of eight thousand, four hundred and forty-five, forty-five dollars and fifty-five cents. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Nesbit, supported by Brum, to approve the purchase of traffic control signs from Dornbosse Signs in Charlotte for the amount of eight thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty-five cents. Questions? Comments?
What type of sign, you mean like a?
Stop signs.
Stop sign, that kind of thing, okay.
What happens this time of year and I think one of the reasons they do it, Rob can explain it, but I'll let him sit there. Go ahead.
So, a lot of our signs are required to have a certain amount of reflectivity.
Okay.
Some of them don't. We actually, I actually had a guy physically go out and do it by wards, election wards. And take a survey of the signs, the thirty-inch stop signs, the thirty-six-inch stop signs and the thirty-inch, thirty-six-inch yield signs. And we need approximately a hundred and thirty-eight and that's for the whole city. And that's some of them being replaced and some are staying. So that's, that's where we're at with that. It should be getting going pretty good once we get the order here.
When I first seen it, I mistook it as being like a stoplight and I thought, oh, that's awful cheap for a stoplight.
No.
Well, if you notice, when you drive around the city, if you're heading north, a lot of the stop signs that are facing south are faded pretty good, so I think that's what your plan is right.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I'm, I'm looking at this paperwork and I have a subtotal of twelve, one twenty-eight, forty-five. Am I, am I reading something wrong? I see two subtotals. I see a total of the eighty-four, forty-five, fifty-five and I scroll down on page one sixteen, one seventeen. I have a subtotal of twelve, twelve, eight point forty-five. Am I doing something wrong? Am I reading something wrong?
The, the twelve thousand?
Oh, it's a different company, oh, trafficsign.com? Is that just to show us what the signs look like?
Yeah, a lot of that too is, there's not too many companies around that do traffic control signs like that. And a lot of ones you get off the internet are what you pay for. Some are better than others and most of the time they won't last.
So it was, it was just a comparison and it has nothing to do with anything?
Correct.
Thank you.
This company that, it's Dornbosse Sign Company out of Charlotte, the city's been doing business with them long before I even became affiliated with the city. I'm guessing they're on their third generation, Dornbosse now.
Weeks.
The dad started and the son took it over and I think the grandson's doing it now, but it's a great company. They're right here in Charlotte. A lot of times what happens if we need a sign or a specialty sign, they can make it for us, so. Pretty handy having, and they are normally the cheapest, so. So we have a motion by Nesbit, supported by Brum, to approve the purchase of traffic control signs for Dornbosse Signs in amount of eight thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty-five cents. Any further questions?
I got a quick question.
Go ahead.
We don't pay sales tax on stuff like this. There's a subtotal and I don't think we pay sales tax, okay.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brum.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Item L, consider approval of a proposal to clean the alum sulfate tank at the wastewater treatment plant by Toplin Group for seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars. Do I hear a motion? Approve?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Support. Motion by Stensel Barton, supported by Rezegi, to approve the proposal to clean the alum sulfate tank at the wastewater treatment plant by Taplin Group for seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars. So is this kind of what you had problems with down there or it got plugged up?
No, this is another, another issue that we've had. The original issue is the heater underneath the alum tank failed. So, we, we needed to, we were gonna replace that. And then we discovered that we should find a different way to do it, a better way, so we have to go through Eagle to get a permit. So, our original plan is to clean that. We need to still clean that. Because it has higher levels of mercury and.
You had to clean it to remove it.
To remove the sludge at the bottom. It, it goes bad over time and it has contaminants in it. So, we, we need to clean that along with our other ongoing project there too.
Okay, we have a motion by Stensel Barton, we have a second by Rezegi to approve to clean the alum sulfate tank at the wastewater treatment plant by Toplin Group for seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Jarvis.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brum.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Item M, item M, consider approval of the sale of trucks number twenty and number thirty at the minimum bid of fifty-one thousand dollars each. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Nesbit, Bowers.
Yep.
Supported by Bowers, to approve the sale of truck number twenty and truck number thirty at minimum bid, fifty-one thousand, minimum bid of fifty-one thousand dollars. Any questions?
These are the trucks we're replacing from what we did two weeks ago?
Yes.
No. We approved the sale of the trucks down at Sewer Plant two weeks ago.
No, the, we, we bought. Purchase.
Okay, okay. I'm all right, I'm all right. Told ya, one mistake tonight.
Thank you.
Not bad, not bad. Okay, we have a motion by Nesbit, supported by Bowers, to sell truck number twenty and truck number thirty at a minimum bid of fifty-one thousand dollars each. That's gonna be on Ranger Bid. And I asked Travis earlier if we were also gonna advertise in local paper to let people know that they can go to Ranger Bid to bid on these trucks.
If we know enough in advance of when they're gonna be placed on their auction site, that could potentially be arranged. But we can certainly do it on our website.
Right, right. Any other questions? Roll call.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brum.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Staff presentations, policy discussions, we have none. City manager's report.
Um, so, I'm glad it's still light outside because we're in the process of replacing the parking lot lights. So you might have noticed that some of them are missing at the moment, but those should be installed. Probably they'll be done tomorrow. They got a lot of it done still today is when they had started. Also wanted to let you know that in addition to the vehicles that were approved for sale tonight, we're also going to be selling the old Patrol Charger. We don't anticipate that it'll bring in more than five thousand dollars, that's why it didn't come to council. But we'll certainly accept five thousand dollars or more if someone wants to bid that on it. But just wanted to make you aware that that was also being sold. We've had it sitting idle for a few years. It's, how long has it been?
Used to be Dale's car, didn't it? Seemed like Dale was on that.
Well, we should charge more for that then.
Yeah, it's kind of filtered through a few different individuals, but for probably the last six to eight months, it's pretty well set idle. We used it for some events, parades and stuff like that, but it's time for it to leave.
So that will be available as well. Friday, probably with my weekly update, I'll send you a copy of the Pazer pavement rating report that Row Engineering completed for us this spring. They evaluated the pavement condition of all of our major and local streets and put together a report regarding that. The good news, I guess you can call it that, is that the majority of our streets are in fair condition, which is normal. Less than five percent of them are in good condition, about eighty-five percent of them are fair and about ten percent are poor. The challenging news, as you'll see in the report, when you look at the map of all of the pavement conditions, a lot of those fair condition roads are still roded very low for fair. So, a one through four rating is poor and a five through seven rating is fair. A lot of our fair roads are at five. So they're very close to the borderline of being in poor condition. So I recommend that you review that report. We'll certainly be talking more about it in the coming months and what we can do to develop a more substantial road maintenance strategy. And that's all I have this evening.
Okay, thank you. In your report, you have, in your packet, you have Chief Boulder's monthly report. And as always, if you want to ask him any questions, I'm sure he's gonna get up and address them.
Good evening. Stand here for a minute just to look at all your smiling faces. Anyway, just a quick update, meeting today out at very central dispatch for the advisory board. Just wanted to bring you guys an update in regards to the eight hundred megahertz tower. Obviously, my report is due before I have my meeting for the month, so I figure it's, you know, when I do this, I'll get up and just give you guys a verbal. So, the eight hundred megahertz tower, at this point, if you guys have seen, it's standing, it's, it's out there, it looks actually pretty good. Kind of fits in well, really, in the location it's at. There was a slight hiccup with, the climbers were scheduled for July tenth to come out and climb the tower to install some of the microwave antennas. They were actually scheduled for both Hastings Tower and Middleville Tower to do this, to do the work. Unfortunately, when they opened the crates for the equipment, there was some damage that was located or found on the antennas. So the decision at that point was not to charge the money to, you know, climb the towers and install equipment that could be potentially faulty. So it's set them back approximately a week or so. So I don't have a date for you in regards to when the tower will be, will they, will access the tower to install. But I was informed today that the, the overall completion date for both the Middleville and the Hastings Tower is around approximately November thirteenth. So they are still hoping to go live, these things online by November thirteenth of this year. So, everybody seems pretty confident that this mark can be hit, but, you know, obviously some things are out of their control and, you know, shipping is one thing that I'm sure we've all experienced before with, you know, getting something and having it not be quite right. So, but other than that, both, again, Middleville and Hastings are on the same level playing field. They're at the same position at this point. All the other groundwork, racks, everything's been installed, so they're getting a lot closer. So anticipation, November thirteenth and, you know, people like myself and Mark and our people and all the users of the eight hundred megahertz system are definitely going to benefit from these towers being installed. So, I just figured I'd give you a quick update on it and if there's any questions, I'll try to help. If not, I know the person to get ahold of to answer the questions and I can get back with you on anything regarding that, those towers.
Any questions to Dale? Either anything on his report or what you just talked about. Thanks, Dale.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
The big hole in the ground on west, uh, west of me, that they, had, I knew it had been there. It's gone, now just a big hole and kids are running up and down with bicycles and motor something because the fences have fallen down. Is, is he something, like something he's going to do with that property?
Are, are you talking about the, the, uh, bill, the house that used to be there?
Yes.
Okay. I will have to look into it, sir. Um, I'm not positive, uh, what the plans are as I stand up here and talk to you right now, but I can look into it and definitely get back to you.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about the kids using their bicycles to drive up and into...
Sure. I will check into it, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dale.
Thank you.
Again. Uh, in your packet, you have the monthly financial reports. Any questions about that? Sarah is our resident expert today. The first week in August, is that when it is? Okay, also in your packet, committee development director, Dan King's monthly report. Uh, anybody have any questions on that? Anything to add, Dan?
I have nothing to add tonight.
Okay, uh, reports and communications, draft DDA minutes, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, is in your packet. Entertained a motion to accept and place that item on file. Do I hear motion?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Support.
Motion by Jasper, supported by Barlow to...
Jasper.
Excuse me.
That's been a while.
Well, second, second, Jasper. Jarvis.
Well, I might be next.
I wrote, I wrote Jasper.
Don't record that, Charles.
Motion by Jarvis, supported by Barlow, to accept item A, draft DDA minutes, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, place on file. All fairies say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Same. Public comment, Joel at this time?
Joel Iverson, Rutland Township. Uh, Hunter isn't here from the banner, but I want to thank the banner for putting on the forum that they did last week, Monday. I hope you all watch it. You'll see a very clear, very different, very vision for the sheriff's office. Um, and I thank him for, uh, as well as Jason for being the moderator for that event. Uh, as I said, I hope you all watch it. You'll see exactly everything I stand for and I won't take up the rest of my three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Charles?
Charles Hertzler, City of Hastings. I just wanted to ask a question on item C and under items of business. You said that they're going to have the, uh, annual roof sit down from nine AM to eleven thirty PM, but the paperwork said to eleven thirty AM. Is, was that just a typo?
Did I say PM?
You did.
Nine AM to ten thirty AM.
It says eleven thirty AM.
Eleven thirty AM.
Okay.
And you, and you're going to hold me to that?
Well, no, I'm just saying that you said PM, but this said AM. And I was just trying to get some clarification, that's all. And that was your fourth mistake.
These people remind me, oh, you've been trapped. Okay. Mayor and council comments. Uh, I want to go first. I want to thank everyone who worked at the fair this past week. Every year we share a booth at the Berry County Fair with the Village of Middleville and Thornapple Township. I would like to thank former mayor Frank Campbell. Frank Campbell's been retired for eight years as mayor. And Frank continues to volunteer every year and he's there, he's there, uh, to fill in for anybody that's not there. Uh, he's the last person, uh, that you'll see at the fair at night. Uh, he works well with everybody that works out there. Uh, we, uh, the Village of Middleville, the Thornapple Township and City of Hastings, we've been doing this, I've been doing this except for one year, uh, and it was COVID. We, uh, for sixteen years that I've been involved in it. And, uh, it's, it's, uh, we showcase our community, we showcase Middleville's community and Thornapple Township, uh, and I really appreciate the camaraderie we have out there and I'm looking forward to it again next year. I think Frank's already signed up for next year at council. Any, any comment tonight, John?
I would like to, uh, say that it's been a great week at the fair. I really enjoyed it, but I'm glad it's over.
Norman?
Yes, sir. Uh, some of you know the incident I had last Monday night that, uh, a pit bull did, uh, attack me in Mallorkey. Uh, it, uh, killed Mallorkey and, uh, I was spent four hours in the hospital making sure everything was all right. But what I wanted to say is I want to, uh, uh, comment on, uh, Dale Boulder. He bent over backwards with Carol and I, spent several hours, uh, he has did, uh, went, I believe, over and above to, uh, to help us and to be part of this. And I look forward to continuing to working with Dale, but I just want you to know that, and I feel this should be a public comment, that Dale has really, really got in there to help, to help us. It's a traumatic time for us, difficult, and, uh, we have, I have replaced the dog. My wife, I believe, needed another one, so we bought another dog Saturday night. But, uh, I wanted to thank him publicly for all that he did. And, uh, also, I'm doing fine. Uh, they found that my head was all right, wasn't bleeding. My neck is all right. Uh, I, uh, I hurt. I, I took, I used my cane a lot last week, but I feel pretty good now and, uh, the bruises, the bumps are taken care of and I believe we'll have everything else taken care of on it. But thank you so much, uh, Chief Dale, uh, for what you did. Uh, it gave a lot of comfort to my wife and myself. And, uh, thank you for, uh, the, dealing with my, my brother and, uh, I believe that he received a great deal of support from you. Thank you so much.
Dale, any comment tonight?
You mentioned Frank and then you said Jaspers. It reminds me of one meeting that, uh, Frank got a little tongue tied and Dave made the, uh, motion and I seconded it and Frank says, "Motion made by..." And he said drugs and hamburgers and, and then he just went off from there. So, I think that was kind of a cute story back then.
I learned from Frank.
You remember that?
Oh, yeah, I remember.
Oh, two mistakes aren't bad.
No, not bad. Well, he said it's over.
Oh.
Well, I'd like to reminisce about being on the council, but since this is my second time, I got nothing. Nothing today.
John?
Yeah. I can't talk very well.